Regular meeting in order. Again, I would like to welcome everybody here and thank you for coming. Usually when we, when we start these meetings, we talk a little bit about our mission statement. And, uh, what I'm gonna do is, is read a passage from a, from one of our teachers in the school about what this teacher thinks our mission statement means. It says, "The ESAC County Mission Statement Means That We Give Our Students The Necessary Tools To Be Successful In Both Today And Tomorrow's World. It Is Our Responsibility As Adults To Model Good Citizenship Through Our Actions And Our Words. It Is Also Our Responsibility To Make Sure That Our Students Are Productive Members Of Society." That's one teacher's thought of our mission statement. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. We don't have any amendments, correct?
No, I'm aware of John's vote.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, John, you wanna go over the consent items?
Yeah. Any questions on the amendments from last one?
Okay, the fund balance reports, um, I guess a little bit better than the last month, but no, no big changes. Operating funds still, um, pugging along the way we've been hoping it would for, for the last six months or so. Keep working on that and stay in touch. As far as the bills go, I got about six or eight comments. The bill to Black Hills Energy For Natural Gas, that's just one month for the Lakeview Campus, so that's higher than normal. I guess it's that time of year.
I'll, I'll talk about that just for a minute. Uh, natural gas spiked in January and February. It spiked, it went way up, and so, um, nothing, nothing we can do about it, but the providers all, it cost them extra, so they have to pass that on, so that's about it.
I would assume it's a tandem with the propane, but, yeah. Uh, the bill to Denny's is for just gas and diesel for vehicles. For Dodge Community Schools is tuition for a student for a semester. Iowa Central Community College is one semester for our college classes. Paper Corporation, you don't see that very often, for four, forty-four hundred bucks. Um, we order paper twice a year, so that, that is a half a year's expense in general. On the next page, the bill to Star Energy, that is all three, gas, diesel, and propane, and would be entirely for bus fleet.
Is that one month?
That's, yes, one month. The gas one, we don't fill every month, the rest of them do get filled, so. Down through Activity Fund, Uptown Sporting Goods For twenty-two ninety is a couple batting cages and the boosters, uh, need to be thanked because they're gonna reimburse us for a large portion of that. I don't remember exactly what percent, but it's somewhere around two-thirds or three-quarters of that, so. Um, Windstar Lines For thirty, three thousand dollars. If you remember, um, the FFA... Is it FFA or is it our, um, one of our ag classes? I can't remember which group it goes, but a group of kids go to Monsanto.
Biotech.
Biotech.
Goes to, uh, to, uh, Monsanto and St. Louis, right? And in the past, Monsanto's kinda, they've flown us down there, um, but we're gonna take a bus this year for whatever reason, so that's...
So does Monsanto reimburse us for that?
We're gonna get, we're gonna get, we're gonna get most of that back. So...
What'd you say, Lisa? I didn't hear.
I think there's more kids going. And isn't that three semesters worth of kids?
Okay. And yes, Monsanto's helping figure it out.
John, on that Booster Club thing, Booster Club's paying fifteen-hundred of that twenty-one-hundred dollar bill.
So, um, that's all that I highlighted, guys. Does anybody else have anything in circle that I can turn to? Okay. Then I would, first of all, entertain a motion to approve the bill to Albright Oil For sixteen-twenty-five. So move.
Motion in a second.
That's all right, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Motion carries for zero. Then, uh, motion to approve the rest of the invoices, the financial statement, and the minutes. Motion in a second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to, um, five A Superintendent Report.
Yeah, three, three things. First one is that, uh, you know, for a number of years, our, uh, football field at Wall Lake has been recognized by pioneers as a field of excellence, and, uh, you get a nice picture and, uh, what, you know, stuff. It's a good thing. Uh, it got, it got to be a better thing this year is that we were, ESAC County was one of two across the country that Pioneer recognizes, uh, and one of our students will get a thousand-dollar scholarship, uh, and they leave that up to, uh, local decision on who gets that. So, I mean, it's basically a thousand-dollar scholarship for one of our kids because of, um, the work that's done on that football field. I think that's kinda, that's kinda cool. Uh, ESAC County will be hosting what's called a Grapple Two Institute, uh, June seventeenth and nineteenth, if that's like a foreign language term to you. A grapple institute is the training, um, that's what the training is called, uh, for our professional learning communities. And so they will have another group of, uh, teachers going through that training this summer. Uh, that's also open for, uh, other districts to join us. Uh, we hosted an earlier version last summer in OABCIG, and it was involved, and, and so we, 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 that's gonna be a good thing. And then the third thing I would share is that we have been working with new opportunities uh, out of Carroll, um, and have applied for the backpack programs through the Iowa Food Bank. And it was mentioned in the hearing, you know, the notion of, of kids on those long days and, or long weekends, and what the backpack program is through the Iowa Food Bank, uh, is that kids that qualify, and to qualify, their criteria is to be on free and reduced lunch. Um, and what happens then is, is the people that are, are kids that are qualified, um, then food from the Iowa Food Bank is moved into, to, I always forget the name of it, in SAC. Yeah, the new op office up there, right next to the, the second store and all that stuff is. Uh, they'll actually do the packaging, and then we'll just have to disseminate it. And that, that's for grades case or six. That's their restriction on the program. And so it's a start. We also are gonna try to work with, uh, um, new opportunities locally and some of our local people to see what we can do to try to help those kids that were, that really are having trouble, but that's one of the things that we said we'd look into, and, and we have, and we haven't heard whether we've accepted or we've done the paperwork, and it's a, a good thing. And that's all no cost to the district too, if anyone's wondering. That's all I got.
I'd like to say one thing about what you were talking about, the field of excellence. Um, you know, when we say pioneer, a lot of people around here think of the seed company. It's not actually the seed company. It's a, a painting and painting equipment company, uh, that gives us that, that opportunity, so, just clarification. So we'll move on to, uh, six A unfinished business. Discuss and/or approve one-to-one technology initiative, purchase/lease. We talked about this at our last meeting, and, uh, we had some questions on whether we should purchase laptops, whether we should lease laptops, and, um, you know, I think we had, we had some good points that, you know, we're, we're gonna spend an awful lot of money, and I think we should maybe take a little extra time to look at this. Uh, we've talked about it for a little while, but, um, let's, let's take an extra month to, to actually talk about the dollar amount that we're spending, and, you know, we're, we're talking about spending a total of four hundred thousand dollars, and, and that's for this year, and, and we've got that in our PEBL account, so we can spend that money and we don't have to borrow it. Uh, but we need to, we need to remember that, you know, this is not gonna be just this year's expense in four years or whatever the cycle rate is gonna be. We're gonna have to spend that money again, so. You know, I think that's a, that's a point that we can make.
We need to remember too, that, Chris, that not all of it's computers. A lot of it's infrastructure and some training.
So you're right, Jay. It won't be four hundred thousand every time. Good point. So is there any discussion on this? I mean, we've talked a lot about the purchase or leases, lease option, uh, and that's really what we're questioning here.
What did you look up, John? Did you find anything?
Yeah, no, I would, I'd just recommend we purchase them. Uh, one point three million in that fund right now. We've planned this for three years. We've been saving the money. Uh, I don't see any point in paying interest.
Well, what do we need to purchase, thirty-three? What's the, what's the motion need to be? How many more would we purchase? Do you know what number exactly? Not the kind of?
Three-twenty.
Three-twenty was the total, right?
Yes. We're gonna buy three-twenty. We purchased thirty, so that's two ninety.
Were they purchased already?
Yes.
For the teachers, yeah, and they're, they're in formative and out.
And if, if you make the motion, it should, can, should include the necessary infrastructure would be appropriate, because then we've got that wireless bid. They were due at three o'clock today, so. I think we got four or five of those.
And, and maybe a way out too, Brennan, a different ways is if the mo, if that's what you choose to do, the motion could be to purchase the number needed for to put a laptop in every high school kid's hands, and then the number can flow to make sure we, so it could just a thought.
I think we planned on two-seventy-four for kids in high school next year, and that was, I think, that was our recommended purchase.
Did you find anything out about the leasing?
No, I, like, we, I talked to John a little bit about it. I think we should, uh, purchasing them, so I have a problem with that. I'll make a motion to, uh, purchase the additional computers needed, um, and, uh, necessary infrastructure to get this one-on-one technology initiative about going.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Uh, I'm not gonna repeat that. That was well said, Brett. Motion in a second, all approve, or all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, uh, now we're gonna move on to new business. Seven A Discuss and/or approve the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen school calendar. We've got two drafts in front of us, X-three and X-four. Obviously, we just had a public hearing on it. We heard several comments. The board didn't get a chance to speak too much in that session, so now it's our turn to, to say what we feel or make a motion, so. Go ahead, whoever, whoever wants to say something.
I'll speak. My, uh, my concerns with the, the draft X-four in front of us has always been the adding additional minutes to a day. I was hoping, uh, that there are ways around that, um, and, uh, I still think there are. We could still accomplish, but this basic calendar trying to do, um, and get away from what our current calendar is doing. So, I, I have concerns about Lightning School Day, I do. And I do have concerns about, uh, thirteen or fourteen Mondays, um, the days off, the kids' lunch, the staff, things like that. I was hoping to get that to a more manageable number. My magic number is nine or ten. Why I come up with that, I don't even know. It just feels comfortable to me and it seems doable, so. That's my comment on X-four.
I would tend to agree with that too. Personally, I don't wanna, I don't wanna see anything with X-three. And I don't know what, what the rest of the board is, but, um, I think, I think X-four is the one that I would like. I'm a lot, liking with, uh, Brett there, I mean, I think there's some ways to, to move some days around to, to get it more manageable for our kids and our community.
I like, I'd like to chime in. I might not have said it, but I like the concept of this calendar better than what we tried this last year or the year, current year with everything. Um, I was just hoping to get fewer Mondays, um, with, uh, with just being teachers here at school. I like having the kids here on one of those two. But I like this concept. I just think it could be tweaked a little bit differently.
I'm gonna say something, and it's probably not gonna be liked by a whole lot of people, and I probably won't even say it, right, but I've got my kids in the system. I, I'm, I'm back and forth on this, honestly. My heart says, um, listen to the teachers because they're the experts. They know what they're doing. I trust my kids at school with them eight hours a day, and I know not all the teachers are with this. I, I, I get that. Majority of them that I've talked to seem to be from the ones that have made a, a point to talk to me about it and the ones that I've kind of run into and had time to talk to about it. Just so y'all know, there are lots of issues that I, I think that if we decide on something tonight, I hope that you trust, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but I hope that you trust that, and I get that you guys think that the plan should be laid out in front of us, but there's a lot of things that are unknown. But I would hope that you guys would trust that those things would get looked at in a very quick manner, maybe, if, if something were to be really bad with, with what we're proposing. I wanna move forward with something. I don't know what the perfect calendar looks like. Like Chris had said earlier, what do we do? Have fifteen, twenty different, I mean, who decides, if, if it were to come to a public vote, who decides what two calendars are put out there to vote on? I don't know. I go back and forth on that. I, I, I will, I mean, I, I trust, I trust with the teachers. I, I, that's just what I personally said. They're, they should know best what is gonna be best for them. And I know a lot of people think that, of course, everybody would like that extra day off, but it, it isn't a day off. I know in my business, I can tell you that probably eighty-five percent of why what happened for me happened was due to networking. And if I can relate that any, in any way, shape, or form to this, when they get together, I think a lot can be learned when they're able to talk about it.
They're meeting the teachers and that.
The teachers. Given the opportunity. I hope and pray that, I, I hope and pray that we don't just stay the same. I don't want this to make things stay the same. I want to see things go up. I wanna see our scores go up. And if that doesn't happen, then I'll be sad.
I think that was well put, Brett. Thank you.
If, if we were to not vote tonight and look at, at doing something, we'll have to go back through the whole scenario of doing another, um,
Public hearing?
Public hearing?
No, I don't believe legally you do. You have to have a public hearing. If we, that's a guess. I don't, if we change the calendar that we have right now and bring a different calendar, then I think we probably would have to have another public hearing. I don't know that for sure either. Do you know, John? Probably should, regardless of what's required of the calendar. That's the right, I think, the right thing to do.
In my, legally, I don't know. In my opinion, and what, I hate to use the word oh, but what we would owe the public would be if we're gonna make a substantial change. I think you can make a slight change and not feel bad about it, but to make a substantial change, I would think that the public should have an opportunity to address this.
Anybody else have any other comments?
If that were to happen, April will be a budget hearing and a budget approval. I wouldn't recommend you just put it back till April. I would recommend two months, and then what's that do with all of your planning, so that would be difficult.
Could we have a special?
Sure.
Hearing, public hearing? I mean...
Yeah, just has to be published in the paper and then... Either way, whatever we do, we need to, we need to have a, a motion in a second and a vote.
I don't, I don't think we're obviously quite ready to make the motion to approve this calendar right now.
A second. Kinda like, talk, talk, they want cards, huh?
I know they've worked, the calendar committee, I mean, they've worked endlessly on this.
Yeah, you know, I think we're all...
But I think we should step back and take in some more comments and stuff, and maybe tweak it somewhere.
What do you think, I mean, what would be ideal? Because I'm talking about getting twenty different calendars in front of us. You know, if we can keep going and going and going and going and going, would it be ideal to say, keep one of these and do something completely opposite? I mean, what, what?
I, I don't, I mean, I... That's what I was trying to say. I do not feel that that's, I guess, I look at... Not out I'm trying to do at all. I've heard the comments from the public. I know that the committee, our administration has to. I want something that looks like this X-four, but a few less Mondays off. Not Mondays off, that's not the right way. Uh, more Mondays at school, I guess.
More instructional days.
More instructional days.
Non-instructional days is what you're saying.
That's what I, I'd like to see it, um, and I, I just don't, it, by not adding minutes to the day, you've solved some of the problems or potential issues that have been brought up. It also forces you to go to school on some of those Mondays because you need some of the hours. I guess that's what I look at. And I think that's possible, and I would feel better about it.
Okay, then, so if we do that, then we're not going, if we don't have those Mondays to use as weather-related days, so that means we will not have any snow days if we would do that, correct?
If I heard what Brett was suggesting correctly, and if it's not Brett, please do correct me.
No.
Is that staying with that concept, there would just be fewer of the, the non-instructional days. If that was the scenario, you could still do what this is designed far as, uh, the snow days, I think. That you could still use, um, that if it comes up for a, a full day. The, the one hit shouldn't that get long, and I'm not arguing with you at all, I, I... Yeah, I'm just not, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying, um, it's very difficult. Something will, will, will go. We don't necessarily be able to match up with the Southwest consourcing days. Some of the continuity with professional learning communities will be lost.
Yep. You want to add? I do.
You know, one of the comments from the public, I'd like to just ask a question of the board, was, uh, looking at, uh, you know, dismissing a Wednesday, that's very suggestive. It doesn't help us for, it's one day every week that you have an early out. Is that something that, if, if we're not going to make a decision tonight, is that something you want me to look at? Or are we on, on this concept?
I just did rough figures because I'd heard it so many times, and I wanna say that I came up with sixty-some hours approximately. But that's without looking at a calendar. That's taking the amount of weeks, the amount of Wednesdays we'd have.
You're right. It'd be close to seventy.
Seventy-ish hours.
That was every Wednesday?
I mean, that's not looking at a calendar. That's going, how many weeks do we go to school a week?
Thirty-four.
How many hours do we legally, what, what is the threshold, the hours that you legally need to get? Since they changed from days to hours, so.
Thousand eighty.
Thousand eighty?
So we still have to do more than the Wednesdays, is what I'm saying.
I'm sorry. Is that a thousand eighty with the conferences and, and other things, or a thousand eighty instructional? Like on, like on this X-four, I see the first thing says instructional time count, one hundred sixty-six days. That equals eleven twenty. Is that the one that has to equal ten eighty, or?
Ten eighty has to be your total, and they allow you to count parent-teacher conferences. I listed it on those drafts that we did, Brett, because when we talk about eleven hundred and nine this year, that doesn't include parent-teacher conferences, so why don't you add a number?
Well, taking, taking the fifteen minutes off each day, if I, if I did my math right, it's forty-two hours.
That is correct. I've done the math on that one.
Yeah, I, I don't take that. I just...
And if you take forty-two hours and keep this exactly, you know...
If you would do that, then you're at about a thousand ninety. You're at about a thousand ninety-something
instructional hours without, uh, parent-teacher conferences. My, my reservation with that is that we've actually gone down in instructur, actual instructional time, and one of the things that I like about this is that we've added additional instructional time.
Because we have.
I don't particularly care for the every Wednesday. One of the things that we tried to do was to get away from, uh, late start, early out, and, you know, that just, to me, it magnetizes, you know, going from seventeen late starts to thirty-four early outs, thirty-five, whatever it was, thirty-three, thirty. I don't, that's my opinion. I don't like that idea. One of the other things that was brought up was... Yeah, go ahead.
I've honestly had nothing to do with this calendar when Kevin was asked to that. But, uh, what Brett said just kinda, I guess, resonated with me, and I just throw something out as food for thought. If you look at this calendar comparison chart and you look at the current year, the thirty-four hours of late starts, would you wait to five days, a little over five days, if you figure six and a half hours a day? If you move to five full days of PD as opposed to seventeen quarter days, I get that puts your instructional days down in the low one-seventies probably, but it's a little higher than the one-sixty-eight, which I think was one thing that I mentioned. I don't know what it does to your instructional hours. I assume it doesn't change it very much at all. It, it's a very simplistic view, so I'm sure there's issues with it. Everybody spent more time on this than I have, but as Brett works through that backwards to the X-four back to the current year, I can work it the other way. Thanks.
I don't, you know, I don't know if you guys are looking for me to, to start the conversation or what, but, um, I, I spoke during the public hearing and publicly said that I'm ready to make a vote tonight. I can't start the vote, so. I don't know if you guys have any other questions or... Well, I'll be the dummy that says it then. I'll make a motion and we, we, we look at another type of calendar similar to what X four is. I think it's very, very close and, and I know the calendar committee said, oh, God, I'm an absolute idiot. But I, I mean, that's not the stuff we're hearing from the community. I think we're very, very close. I think we know something similar to, to what both John and Brent have said tonight, that we're very close. And do I want to have this going on a month? No. Because I, I, I didn't want to come to the meeting tonight because I knew how hard this was going to be tonight. But that's my motion.
To paraphrase that, Jim, what I'll put in the boardroom this time would be motion to review an additional calendar similar to X four at a future meeting. Fair?
Obviously, I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to look at a similar, similar calendar to X four with fewer PD days. PD Mondays, let's say. Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Simon opposed.
Was that four one?
Okay, we'll move on. I don't want to do this one either. I don't either. That's what they pass for. Seven B, discuss and/or approve two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen elementary sections. And I know there are some of you in, in the audience today who want to talk about this. I think what we should do is let Dr. Feeney speak a little bit about it. And then if we as a board have some questions, we should ask that. And then, you know, I believe that we should allow the public to speak a little bit on this also. So. Dr. Feeney, go ahead and.
Well, most of this goes back to the section size and there's some that are on the bubble, kind of the same thing that was dealt with last year. And again, this always is, is its head at the elementary level. It seems, it seems that I'm looking for the piece of paper that I thought I brought, which I didn't, that had enrollment numbers. Thank you. The, the issues I think for the board to consider would, would start with first grade at SAC Elementary. Currently, there's twenty-five. I have one section of kindergarten and there's a thought that that should be split. That's one option or one thing to look at. You've got the same situation in fourth grade where you're at, at SAC Elementary, where you're looking at twenty-five anticipated students. And again, those numbers can change with transparency, but that's best available with the.
[coughs]
Some change since this went out. Those would, those would be two, two considerations. The rest are pretty much bona fide. They, they just make sense. And then the other one that, that may even be the stickiest wicket of the bunch is dealing with pre-kindergarten or transitional kindergarten. Let's just agree that we're going to call it either PK or TK. That, that covers all of it. Same program. And if a program was put in, would have been, I think, three, three years ago to, to meet needs of kids that are coming out of preschool, the kindergarten program. And that may just need a little boost before they actually head into kindergarten. And there's a couple philosophies that really kind of drive this on what's the purpose of, of PK, PK. And one, one, one side of the ledger on this particular issue is, is that we really are there focusing on academic needs and that really is what should drive who has enrollment, who gets enrolled into that class based on various academic measures with the idea being, again, everything's focused academically. That's one side of, of the ledger. And taking that a step further, if you look at the RTI stuff and the different tiers of where kids should be, in our school, say there's sixty kids in that class, about no more than twenty percent according to that should be classified as needing additional academic assistance. And so where the class is sixty, twenty percent puts it at a cap of twelve-ish. You know, that's, that's where that logic comes from. You know, the other side of this is that PK, TK can certainly serve, should certainly serve those kids that need an academic boost, a little jumpstart, additional time, et cetera, et cetera, to head into kindergarten. But then you also can, there are situations where parents would like to put their kids into that particular section for whatever the parental reason is. Some of the ones that have been shared with me is, you know, maybe it's a maturity level, maybe it's particularly when the birthday is and those types of things. It was parent choice. And, and so that really is the scenario for the TK, PK. And as I, I've tried to tell people, philosophy really is going to matter here because you can make a pretty strong case on both sides of that ledger. There's logic to both of the arguments. It kind of depends on what you want to prioritize and what you want to do. So those really would be the issues that I would see dealing with elementary sections.
Mike, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I mean, obviously, you would have some say in this. You and I haven't been, had a chance to talk before the meeting. Are you prepared to give some arguments?
Arguments?
Well. Comments, I guess.
And I know this is, this, this too is a, is a, is a topic of concern for a lot of people. When the transitional kindergarten was put together with half-day start with, and it was three years ago, Kevin did a very good job of informing you of that whole scenario. And we, at that time, we did do that to try and help students academically that were, that maybe needed an extra year. Through the following year, it grew into a whole-day program out of, out of people just needing their kids to be in school for a whole day. And we saw that as a great opportunity, more hours, more academic time, more growth. Then we, then we, we kind of added another section this past year and I'll be honest, it kind of got away from us. And the section grew to a point where it's almost as big as the kindergarten sections. And that really wasn't intended to be the transitional kindergarten at that point. We all know by research that low numbers or a low teacher to student ratio helps students that are in need. In my, in talking with the Department of Ed, talking, I talked to Pocahontas School District, who roughly has sixty-five kids. I asked them, how many transitional kindergarten classes do you have? They said, one. I said, where would it be? And they said, in Pocahontas. I talked to Carol. They're in a whole different ballgame of upheaval and retentions and all kinds of information about what do we do? I brought you, this is just one that I picked. I brought you some information. It's reading material, so you have a better idea of research that is behind what the program, what a transitional program might look like or might, might be. It's, you'll find out that retention and transitional programs are not all that favored with research, that it actually makes a difference. I don't, I don't particularly like saying that right now, but it just is what it is. It will give you an opportunity to read through some of that. Please don't misunderstand that, that my resolve to have one of the best early childhood literacy programs in the state is just that. I would really like that to happen. I also ask you as board members, you know, are you fiscal, you're fiscally responsible to the, the people, the public. We need, we need that kindergarten position. That kindergarten section in SAC, the incoming preschool needs to, there's thirty-six of them. I don't think Ms. Frygman wants, she's right, with the number she has now, I don't think she'd really, really bump up any more than what she had this year. If you look, when you looked at my board report, I've given you reading results last month. I gave you math results this month. You can see this year's math results and last year's third grade reading results. You asked me last year when we were making the decision about two sections, bringing data back. The data, the math data, the fourth, the data fell in that class. I mean, that's, I, I it is what it is. I'm not happy about it, but that's where it's at. So do, do I think we need that second section there? Yes. So then it comes back to you fiscally. Are you, are you willing, willing to hire all that much staff back again? Or do we adjust the staff that we have and work it that way? I know that's not a popular, I know it's been said, well, Fisher can't make this decision and different things like that. I'm just trying to lay it out in front of you. That's the important piece to me. Any questions other than, I think.
Could I paraphrase the right what you said at the end, Mike, and see if I get it right? From the strictly, not even talking the educational piece of it, but strictly from a financial perspective, we would be looking at adding one or two new positions. Would that, is that what I heard?
Right, yes. And my, in my theory, when I, when I first talked to you, talked to Kevin about it, is if we went back to one transitional kindergarten, we would take that staff member that's housing the second transitional kindergarten, move them if that's, contractually, if we can do that, which, that's possible. The district doesn't have to hire another teacher. And then that would be the one. Now, if you want to go the other route, then that's adding that much, that, adding that much to it. And I know we can, you can talk about age and you can talk about this. But on the other side, there's this other group of parents that may not be here to stand in front of you to say the low teacher to student ratio was what is important to us to help our student move forward. If you get seventeen kids in a classroom, in a transitional kindergarten classroom, then I just will send my kid to kindergarten. They're, yeah, that's the fun part of where you're kind of, kind of weigh everything. And that's, that's where I sit too. Because if we go to a transitional class of seventeen, those students that are, that are needing that higher teacher to student ratio, obviously, are not getting that anymore. But as you read through that information, then you're going to scratch your head a little bit. So just a little bit of research for you. I have more if you'd like more. It's not mine. I didn't, it actually came from the National Association for Education of Young Children. It's fairly recent, so.
Where does that sit, say? It's been brought up, the whole two-year program for kindergartners, send your kid two years to kindergarten instead of.
Then why do you have this?
Do you want to hold your kid back though in kindergarten and not send it to a BK, TK kindergarten? I mean, doesn't that sound like natural? Instead of, oh no, I'm holding my child back in kindergarten.
I mean, certainly would be an option, I guess, not being a kindergarten teacher and we have one here, but you would have to have a two-year curriculum processed and ready to go. And the differentiation required in that setting would be perhaps overwhelming.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, if, if it had just been brought up, I'd heard it a couple different times. And I thought, if, if we have that, then why do we even have TK? You know, really, what's?
And after you read that information, you're probably going to ask yourself that question even more. It's rather, it's rather disturbing to even read what that, that adds up.
I don't know. I remember.
I, I, I too, I know this, I, I asked Mary Ann to put together data over our, from our last three years of kids, where are they at in second grade and where are they at in first grade? And I'll be honest, I'm going to have to really dig into this data a lot, a lot more than what I have looked at it now to find out where I'm seeing a lot of the growth that we need to see. And I'm not, I'm not saying that in a negative sense to our teachers because they do a fine job. We have to do the finest in transitional kindergarten. But I've also, you know, I've also heard, well, you know, it's age and different things like that. Well, you know, I think that's a, when, when do we, when do we say, okay, with our early literacy, my kid, my child isn't ready, so I'd like grade two and a half? Because at the end of third grade, if they're not proficient, we either, either have to retain them, we have to provide intensive assistance programs.
That's by two thousand seventeen, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Chris, could I address one aspect of that right now? I mean, all, the pre-kindergarten teachers are all sitting here. And we all have transitional students in our rooms this year from the past year. And if you would get out the FAS test from this past winter, kindergarten was the one grade level that was proficient. So I feel like we've been able to deal with kids who are ready for kindergarten. And, you know, I'd welcome any of you to come in and look at the FAS testing because it is pretty intense. You are going, if you send students to kindergarten, you are not ready for kindergarten, maturity-wise, attention-wise, academically. I kind of feel like we're setting them up for failure because it is intense. And like I said, I feel like this year, we've been sent students who are ready for that. They're ready for what we have to present in kindergarten. When I go by Ms. McCullough's room, which I'm not in SAC City, so I can't address that, but they have similar curriculum to get them ready. They have to do the same testing, but it is not as intense. They do have more time to do things that apply to the curriculum, but they don't have to just hammer away every day. And by next year, I feel like those students will be ready to come to us for expectations at the kindergarten level also. So, and I just, I feel like TK is a natural progression. Of course, my kids are way past being in kindergarten. And a comment was made that I would have rather sent my child to kindergarten. Absolutely not, because I expect more for him than to be at the lower end of his section. Absolutely not. So, and I feel like if we send the students on, we could, if we have the choice of begin kindergarten, then TK, then kindergarten, they have a natural progression. Otherwise, it would look like BK, kindergarten, oh my goodness, they weren't ready, they aren't mature enough. And if you're saying it's strictly academic, okay, they might be academically ready, but if they aren't mature enough to handle those days, handle the, the stamina of that work, then they're going to be frustrated. We're going to get pushed back with behavior, self-esteem, all of that sort of thing. And when we put this program into place, there's a section of students in second grade that were sort of our bunch that we did this program with. And to look at them now and think if, if we didn't offer that to them, where would they be? I just, I guess personally, why, why would we set them up for that failure of frustration and behaviors when it's a natural progression to go BK, TK, kindergarten, if we can do that, that way? I would absolutely, a hundred percent support that.
The thing that concerns me with, with the process is, you know, we talked about the school calendar affecting the lives of our kids. This, this sort of thing affects the lives of kids, but we don't necessarily know that when they're six, seven years old. We're going to find that out when they're twelve and they're going into fifth and sixth grade and they just can't handle being around. and they just can't handle being around kids that are older than them. You know, that's the thing that scares me about this. And I, you know, I'm not saying that you can't hold your kid back in kindergarten and, you know, everybody thinks that's bad. I was held back in kindergarten thirty years ago, you know, so I don't think it's terrible. But that's the, that's the things that we have to think about.
If we have the option.
Amanda?
I have a son in the almost exact, basically like twins, same date here, but almost the exact same situation as Lisa. And I still look at him now and think, oh my, if he was in kindergarten this year, I already know that I would have had the conversation months ago with the teacher of, oh, you're probably going to be here again next year in kindergarten. And then thinking to my middle son, his birthday is July thirty-first. And because of how our big kindergarten is set up, you know, he'll be four for just a few weeks and then start begin kindergarten. So that scares the crap out of me. If you, if we want to have him go to begin kindergarten, you know, he'd have to start then. He couldn't wait until the next year and be five for a few weeks and then go to begin kindergarten. So then that, you know, talking about what you said, Chris, we can't predict the future, but it sure scares me, I guess, as a parent, just of three little kids that I might have a son who graduates and is eighteen for two weeks and then goes off to college. Yes, it can be done. I know there's a lot of people that happens to, but oh my, that really scares the crap out of me.
Chris, I don't want to pick on you, but, you know, being held back in kindergarten back then, that'd been the best thing that happened to you. And how do you know it isn't the best thing that would happen to some of these kids? You know, I don't have the answer, but-
That, I think that's, you know, that was partially my comment is, is I don't think anybody in here has the answer. But if we're going to, if we're going to, and this isn't the right way to say it, but if we're going to screw up as a school district, let's, let's let the parents have some say in that also. You know, that's my, that's my feeling. I mean, let's go to them and say, we suggest that you send your, your child to kindergarten, but we want to get your opinion in it too. But that being said, we've, we've got some information tonight that we haven't been able to look at. And my opinion again, but I think this is way too big of a decision to make without having some time to, to look at this information. And, you know, the fifteen minutes that we've had it, I don't think that's enough time.
Chris, would it be possible to make a decision on that fourth grade position and, and that second section of kindergarten? And then we can deal with that at, when you-
Pre-K, TK? I think that's, I think that's a whole different story, Mike. I think that's something that we could probably, but, you know, I can't, I can't talk to the other board members, but, you know, we could definitely-
Mike, you said kindergarten, you meant next year's first grade class?
No, next year's kindergarten class. We have thirty-six, we have thirty-six students in preschool right now at the SAC building. And they won't fit into Tiffany's classrooms next year unless-
How do we know if many of them will be going to TK though?
Well, I was going to say, how do you make that decision until you know what the TK, PK decision's going to be?
Well, you'll, you're going to have to, you're going to have to make that decision anyway because you're going to, you're going to have to have that section. If you want to keep, if you want to keep your transitional section, then you're going to keep that anyway. That, those are the two positions you're adding, your fourth grade, fourth grade position and your kindergarten position. You can, you can open up those positions if you decide that tonight. And then you can, you can read your research and look at things for your transitional. Is that, am I saying that right?
Back up here, let's see. Begin kindergarten, how many kids do they have up in SAC right now?
In preschool?
Yeah, in preschool, begin kindergarten, preschool.
Let me look at some numbers here.
And that's Mrs. Niehaus, correct, up there? Because if we have the TK program, some of them would go to that. Good chance.
Nine of my class will go to kindergarten, yeah.
So you have nine?
I have nine.
That will go to kindergarten?
Three from Wall, or, we have three from the Wall.
Kindergarten in SAC, nine.
So you got six, and then with those six, you would have thirty, you would have thirty-six.
Nine kids will go to SAC.
I have three more, there's twelve kids altogether.
There's twelve altogether in-
Yes, but three of mine will go back to Walleye, nine of them are SAC.
Okay, so nine will go to kindergarten for sure. But out of that BK program of Mrs. Niehaus-
Twenty-seven, yeah.
There's twenty-seven. But if we have the TK program, not all twenty-seven of them are going to go to kindergarten, correct?
Not necessarily, yeah.
Do you have any three-year-olds in that program?
No.
I don't, I don't understand how you're getting that number then, for sure. You're saying that all twenty-seven are going to go to, to get the thirty-six number?
You have twenty-seven preschoolers and you got none, you got thirty-six.
Yeah.
And you take, even if you took ten out for the transitional kindergarten, I don't know if it's that much-
It would still be twenty-five, that's what Tiff had this year.
Okay, well, if you want to-
But it wasn't good, I've got a little, I've got a little hell in my gut. I will be quite honest in saying that I said, if she is-
I understand that.
You know, I, I think it's great that she has helped her now. And I think she thinks it's great that she has helped her now.
You know, after you read this, after you read the research, you're going to, you're going to have, most of you have a different look on the whole situation.
Back to TK though, that is, we get money for those kids, correct? For five-year-olds.
Because they're considered kindergartners.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that money we get pretty much pays for-
They're fully funded by the state formula of prekindergarten, preschool, begin kindergarten, that's it, they're, that's a point five.
It's a lot for kindergarten.
I think we all, we're all in the same page that our kids, she had a very large class this year. But it would be great if that wouldn't have to happen again.
I think what Mike was asking for you to consider, it's entirely up to you, obviously, is to look at, if possible, to make a decision on the, on the kinder, adding a kindergarten teacher. Mike, if I'm not paraphrasing incorrectly, what you asked them to consider?
Yeah.
Looking at adding a kindergarten section. What else? Fourth grade?
Fourth grade.
And fourth grade. What about this year's kindergarten class of twenty-five?
I would leave that two sections, I would-
Put that in two sections?
Yeah, I'd leave the two first grade teachers intact as they are, move that group. I can't quote where the research is from, but the research says that when you tax students for one year, usually they can withstand that. But if you tax them a second year in a row, that's where you start to see a decline in their ability.
I've heard a lot of things tonight, a lot of them I do not understand, but today. Things that I do know for numbers that, that I think the board needs to be concerned about and the public needs to know too is, our operating fund balance has been steadily shrinking. And end of January in two thousand eleven, it was two and a half million dollars. And at the same time in two thousand twelve, it was two million, basically twenty, two-point-one million dollars we go with. A year ago, it was one-point-four, and now it's one-point-three. So if you look at that trend, financially, the last thing the board should be doing would be adding staff. Because every teacher that spoke tonight, everybody that's been saying things, is going to want a raise and deserve a raise and get a raise. And there's no way to do those things and add staff without creating financial hardships next year and the year after. Contractually, it gets to be an issue to where, if you're going to hire this one staff, are you going to hire them for one year, then fire them? That can be sustainable. It's not a very good way to treat staff, I guess. But I hear everybody wants to educate the kids in the best way, and that's why the board's here. And the school board's not here to make money. But if we don't fix this problem, and I call it a problem now, then we're going to have a lot more things to deal with, a lot quicker than we need to deal with than worrying about twenty-five versus twenty-seven kids in this one section. And those things need to be talked about too. There's nothing, anybody wants to hear about it, nobody likes to hear it, but those are cool hard facts. And I, I have a hard time, we're starting talking about maybe hiring three staff, from what I heard. I don't see how we can afford to hire one. We're replacing, this year, our, our kids are what, ninety, ninety-plus? And we're going to replace them with a class of what, forty, fifty? You know anything about school finance? Well, that's a financial hardship that's hard to deal with just right off the bat, because we get paid per kid. So I don't have an answer for this. I hear what everybody says, I feel the educational part of it, I get it, but we still have to find a way to pay for that. You can sit back and say, oh, we got one-point-three million. Yeah, three years ago, we had two-point-five. And where's it going to start? So, long and short of it is, we can't really tax you more for it. I mean, you sit back and say, you think you can, you can do a little, few things to fudge it around. We've done some of those things. But so far, I just see something that's not getting, it's getting, bad part's getting better, but it's still getting worse. So that's something we need to consider before we start hiring one person, two persons, three people, whatever. I hear it, I believe it, you need some staff down here. Does that mean we have to give rid of staff up above? Because that's the only way you can afford to pay for this. Maybe not this year, but if you don't make that decision this year, it's going to happen next year. There's nobody that can fix it. That's my two cents worth, which took about twenty minutes, I guess.
I think that was really well put and, you know, I'm just going to, I'm just going to say what I think about that whole thing that Brent was saying. I've only been on the board for about four, five years now. But Brent is the smartest person that I've ever met when it comes to school finance, other than John, but John does it all the time. So, yeah. And so when Brent talks about things like that, I think we need to listen. Personally, you know, when, when I think about this, I don't think, I don't think we have enough information to make a decision tonight. I know that nobody wants to hear that, nobody wants to, you know, come back to another meeting and talk about this. But honestly, these are things that are affecting our kids. And this is much bigger than a school calendar, as far as I'm concerned.
What information, Chris, can we work on to provide you so that you're in a position to make a decision? What types of things are you, are you wanting, because we'll certainly work hard to provide?
Well, first of all, I think, you know, we need to, we need to know if we want to hire one person, two people, or three people. I mean, I think we've, I don't think we've talked so much about three, but we've definitely talked about one and maybe two. How does that affect our, our funds going forward? You know, Brent talked about two-point-five million three years ago, and now it's one-point-three million. And that's one-point-two million dollars that's gone. And it's not, I mean, it's not like we've spent the money foolishly, I don't believe. You know, it's the, the time of the school. I mean, we're, we're-
So you'd really like us to do some kind of analysis of what potential financial impact, the best projection that we could make?
Yeah, and-
Is there any staff that may have that certification that's already on board that could be moved to that?
Even, maybe, and even if there was a certification, we don't have, that's going to open another position that they were in before, wouldn't it?
Could be a trickle-down effect though. We might be able to move third grade teacher down, fifth grade teacher down. I mean, I'm just thinking, trying to think of scenarios, think outside the box a little bit.
Chris, I don't want to, you know, I expect anybody to answer this question, but could you solve your problem? I was on that planning and zoning committee, was it, three years ago, Mr. Feeney?
I believe, from two, three.
Would it solve your problem, and I don't expect an answer? If you put your two elementaries together, would you have enough teachers? And I don't expect an answer, it's just thinking outside the box with Jake.
I, I think that that's something, and we've talked about that before. I mean, that, there are so many different factors. I mean, discussing possibly, say, this is just a suggestion, so don't take it for any more than that, merging the fourth grade teachers to avoid having to hire a teacher. They would put the numbers at what, what would the student count be? Mike, do you know?
It's about sixty-four, twenty-one in class.
And from what I asked, it was pretty doable, the teachers thought that was pretty doable. So, and, and that brings up a whole nother, like you said. I mean, that's, that's a topic that, I want to want to-
Well, when I was on that committee, Mike helped me out for numbers, but when we toured the buildings, our newest building in SAC had nine or twelve empty rooms.
At that time, they were done. Now there, we've, we've added some additional staff. Probably what Brent's crap he's had about.
Well, there's no doubt that there's certain rooms, that's a consideration the board wants to talk about. But you also have to consider, I'm not, I'm just talking, I'm not advocating anything, is they also have to figure in additional transportation costs for doing that. And that is straight to the fund expense. And truthfully, if you, John, correct me when my math goes awry here, but if you were, you know, stop there, there's more additional transportation.
You'd have to weigh that against what a teacher costs.
Right, I wish I'd have said it that clearly.
You know, just speaking as, as a parent, when Mike gave us these numbers and he said that they've dropped, because as a parent, I was asking where we were at with those, you know, and not hiring, we got a teacher and a half. And I hate what Brent does. I love what he does, but I hate that part of it. I don't, I don't like to hear that stuff, but I'd rather pretend that it's not true. But it's amazing how when I was sitting on the other side of things and I heard it, how I-
Didn't matter.
Yeah, I wanted what I wanted for my kid and that, I don't, I don't care, don't tell me about the finances, but having to sit on this side and it's a true, it's a real thing. But it breaks my heart because at the same time, it's my kid we're talking about and what they're going to get or what they're not going to get. You know, it's, it's hard, it's not easy. Like you said, being able to make a decision tonight, I don't-
What I might suggest of, of just, just moving to table this?
I think we need to know what numbers are going to be in, in all three, if that's the way to go. And one would be if there's two, I mean, you've got kindergarten and kindergarten.
How do we know that though? Do we talk to the parents, we need a definite, you know, are you sending them or not? To TK, and how do we-
And you'll get some improved, and yes, would be the answer, but you also will get, in mind, Jeanne, Jenny, who are here to work with these kids, and parents, you'll also get, the answer would be, as my preference would be, is to, to be in PK, but it depends on where it's located.
So there's a whole nother.
Am I wrong? So, Mike, was it a fair bet that we can do some work in the next three weeks and try to shore up our best projection for a couple of different scenarios and bring that back?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I want to help the board as much as I can because I know it's not easy to sit up there and try and make a decision like this. I, you know, the most, as much data as I can give you, I do have some more research that's from the Department of Ed. We could talk about some of the comments made by the preschool site visit people. There, there's a lot of pieces to this, but-
I think, that's fine, I, I guess I'm really talking more about, let's, let's work out several different scenarios with our best possible guesses after visiting with the right people on what are, what are we looking at in kindergarten, what are we looking at in PK, et cetera, et cetera, and bring that back to a little more bona fide numbers for you to deal with.
Would it not be feasible to set a deadline for the PK? Would it not be feasible to set a deadline for the PK, begin to garden, TK group of parents? Send them out a letter and say, "What are your plans with your child?"
If you would like to go away from the opportunity for students to, that are in need, to get first choice, that definitely would be a possibility. I, it scares me a little because I don't, you know, what if, if the number is raised to twenty? I mean, we have to cap it somewhere. How do we, how do we cap that? How do we, how do you get...
Twenty in each, twenty in each SAC and Wally? Would be, would be in the TK?
I have no, I don't know, Lisa. That's what I'm, I don't know how to know that. We could, we could send a letter out and ask what their intentions are.
I just thought maybe if the parents knew, I mean, if they had a deadline of saying, "Make the decision of..."
To help us make our decision.
To help us make a decision.
I was gonna say, then you're gonna have, and I'll do it if it's in, in one facility, but if I have to move my child, then I'm not gonna do it. Then your numbers are gonna...
That would help you make a decision, even if they said that.
Deanna, help me out with the top, is there a way you could...
Well, I know isn't the parents really asked a lot of questions at conferences, and part of it is stressed right now, because I couldn't tell them anything.
I sure wish I had that problem. That's what'd made this a lot easier for me. Yeah, for you guys, too.
Lisa, I think we can, we can look into that. I just don't know quite how to do it right now, but I, I understand what you're saying. Maybe Kevin and I can sit down and try and figure out how could we hold them out? We can figure something out.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just feel that the parents that have contacted me would say, "Yes, I want my kid, my child to go to TK," whether it's in SAC or Wally.
I've heard that, too. I've heard that say that.
I mean, I, I think they want to know that there's gonna be a TK program.
Right. Okay.
Period. And they want the choice of going there, whether it...
No matter where it would be, yeah.
Yeah. I think more so than...
We could put something together to see, just... I know there's been, there's been some parents that have said that we have flagged as students that probably would have an opportunity to go, we limited our numbers, and they've, they've said, "No, their, their kids are going to kindergarten." They're not even taking the choice. You want...
Well, at least we gave them the choice, though.
Yeah.
Right? I don't, I think it, I think the parents have to have that.
Like I said earlier, I haven't really picked any partial control on it.
Is there any benefit to us having like a work session before next scheduled meeting? Because this is gonna bring up a bunch of people. Just the whole idea of somebody saying that we might have one sec, or all fourth grade in SAC is gonna cause forty extra people to sit in those seats. And we just will have something other than, than another meeting like this prior to, so they can at least hear that. I mean, some of the confusion tonight, I feel, was operating on the four-day work week was the whole idea, everybody thought we were taking every Monday off. If we have a meeting before that, we're sure we're working on this and we can talk as a board and the public can chime in if we allow it. And then the next meeting, we can probably have a better chance of making a decision. I don't want another meeting, my God, I don't, but I'm fine with that. If there's any benefit to it, and whether or not you guys can get the stuff, what you think we need together in two weeks or three weeks or whatever it is. And what do you guys think about that? Administration?
Fine idea.
Oh, yeah, because we've gotta be making decisions for...
It's March.
I mean, everybody. You can't be...
Let's, let's just have, I liked, personally, it's your choice, obviously, but I, I like the idea of a work session and that's what we'll focus on and we'll have, well, Mike and I will get together maybe like eight tomorrow morning and, and start on putting this...
Is there nothing else going on?
At some point, anyway. And look how we can frame this. I got some slots that others can be positioned to ask parents, this scenario, this scenario, this scenario, and get that feedback.
So for right now, do we need to move to the table?
I'd say new business, I do.
There's no action, there's no action.
Yeah. Discussing or approve, what we did, a lot of discussing. So that'll certainly be on the next meeting. Okay, so we're gonna move on to seven C, discuss plan for superintendent evaluation. This is something that we've talked about a little bit in the last couple of months, but not a lot. I personally don't have a problem with the way that we've been doing it. And I think for the board, for you new board members, what we've done in the past is we've each filled out the evaluation sheet that we have and then given that to the board president. The board president puts it all together, talks with the superintendent, and then we have a closed meeting and discuss whatever it is that we want to discuss as far as evaluation goes with Dr. Feeney. If you guys want to see it done a different way, I think we should talk about that right now. Like I said, personally, I, I like that process.
Just add one thing, that the evaluation is based on leadership standards, just like teacher evals are based on teacher standards. It's the same.
Are you okay with the way you've been evaluating this part of the process?
Yes.
And I'm fine with it. We'll try to fix it. We always have that.
Chris, did you get a chance to read that email?
Yeah. And, you know, honestly, I did read it and I think, you know, I think those, those kind of things that, I don't remember, was it Council Bluffs that was doing it? You know, I think, I think the kind of things that Council Bluffs was doing is great. I think we sort of do some of those things, maybe not, maybe not along the lines that they do, but, you know, like our, you call that a update, our board update that we do, you know, twice a month. I think that helps. And I think if you get into the process a little bit, Amanda, I think you'll, I think you'll like it, too. So I think we should go through it once and, and see what you think. And then, you know...
It's one of those things, I think there's some, there's really, there's some tricky things about what you brought back I do. That's something...
For both ends. I mean, that's what...
But that's something that, that's a change that we want to talk about. We ought to be talking about having that from day one of the school year.
Oh, yeah. I didn't mean it for this year at all. I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to read it.
So I think this'll help you out some. These are clean copies and that's what the decision's ring.
Want to have one?
No. No hesitation. So, let's, when do we usually have it done by? Usually done by the end of the school year?
Usually we have a, at the June board meeting, we'll have a closed session, go through that. You, I would suggest, and what's in the process that we've developed a couple of years ago is that you pretty much will give the board a time that you want them back to you.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about.
And that can be whatever, whatever.
Yeah, that'll take me at least a week or two. So, you know, I think if we have them back, I mean, if we have them back May first, or the first part of May, that'll give me...
I'll give it number. The first part of May, because some people get a fourteen, that's the first part of May.
May first is a Thursday.
Perfect. So let's go, let's go, May second, that's a Friday.
And then you compile them and then we all get together, is that how it is?
Right. Then I, then, yeah. What I do is compile them, put them together word for word, and then the ratings also. And you'll notice that the one through four ratings are on here because of me. The first year I did this, I did it backwards. So, pardon my French, but Dr. Feeney was, I won't say it. He wasn't very happy with me. Things have worked out, so, yeah. May second, have them back to me and then we'll put them together and then our board meeting in June or, or March. So now, the thing everybody's been waiting for, let's talk about the budget. Seven D. I, I can't wait. John, you wanna pick this one? Have you thought enough tonight?
Everything Brent said is true. No, that'll start it out for you. First of all, what will make you really happy when we talk about our operating fund and needing more money to hire the appropriate number of staff for class members. If Iowa was average in the United States for the amount of money their state spends on education, we'd have over an extra million dollars a year to spend.
As E-SAC counted.
If we, as E-SAC counted, if we were average. So we get six thousand dollars a kid that we're allowed to spend, it would be like seventy-two hundred or some number like that. So there, blame Des Moines, I guess, but anyhow, that's beside the point, we're not gonna fix that with twenty percent allowable growth this year. So, in your packet was about twelve pages of the budget worksheets. The entire packet of information we do is about twice that, and you'll probably see that next month, but this is the nuts and bolts of it. This draft that you're looking at has the following information. It has ten percent instructional support levy, which is the maximum, which is what we're doing this year. In this draft, it's funded with one percent SIR tax and the balance of property tax. It has a two hundred thousand dollar cash reserve levy. This year, the cash reserve levy is set at seventy thousand. It has three hundred thousand dollars set for the management fund. This year, I believe we're at two hundred and seventy thousand. And it has the thirty-three cent pebble, which is what we currently have this year. So in the back of that packet, there's like six or eight page worksheet with hundreds of lines of information, and we get to make about six decisions out of all that. So let's start with the easy one. And the reason I'm gonna ask these questions tonight is so we can publish a proposed budget that we can bring back to a budget hearing and then approval in April. And once we publish that, we can't raise anything. If we would choose to lower something after that, we can, but we cannot raise anything. So keep that in mind as we're answering these questions. So this is just our first look through it for the public and then it'll be in the paper and we'll have something to approve in April. So if we start with the pebble levy, the maximum you can do is thirty-three cents. I think both districts and now the new district has done that every year for the most part. SAC maybe didn't a couple of years. But anyhow, it's thirty-three cents per thousand and it generates a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for our district, and I recommend we keep that. The management levy, I recommend we increase it slightly, due to insurance costs. And we had about eighty or eighty-five thousand dollars worth of early retirement expenses a year ago that come out of that fund, and we got a little bit behind, so we need to make some small steps here to get that balance back up. So to generate that three hundred thousand dollars would be about eighty-four cents per thousand on property tax. Two things we've done as a board in the last three or four months would be to approve modified allowable growth for dropout prevention, and that was two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I'd recommend we put that in completely. That would be about eighty cents on the tax rate. And then we approved special ed deficit from prior year and increased enrollment, SPRC. The school budget review committee allows you to levy for that. Those two things together added up to a hundred and eighteen thousand, and we approved those in November and December. And so that's a hundred and eighteen thousand, that's about thirty-three cents, about the same as a pebble on the levy. So then if you jump down to the cash reserve levy, we had a low balance in our general fund last fall, is when we typically see our low balance, and it was about three hundred and ten to three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars cash. For us, that's a little less than half a month's expenses. So that's gotten it pretty close. What would we have done if we'd have ran short? We would have borrowed from ourselves, we would have borrowed from our pebble or our loss account, so we wouldn't have paid interest to anybody but ourselves. But still, I think it would behoove us to, to see that minimum more around one month's expenses, which is six to eight hundred, seven to eight hundred thousand. And I realize we don't want to get that all back at once, but the two hundred thousand dollars would be fifty-five or sixty cents per thousand on the property tax. And it seems like the fiscally responsible thing to do. I guess that's open for discussion. And then the last thing that we really get any choice on is the instructional support levy. And it could be a maximum of ten percent of our regular program cost, and for our district, that ten percent would be about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And the way I have it laid out in this budget, it's one percent SIR tax and the balance in property tax, and that property tax portion is a dollar fourteen in this draft, the way this is laid out. About four hundred and ten or fifteen thousand dollars.
Did you already talk about why the SIR tax?
No. Last year, we had no SIR tax and this year, in the instructions for the budget, there was new instructions. It said every instructional support levy that calls for a combination of property tax and SIR tax will have both property tax and SIR tax. So in the past, when we chose our combination to be zero SIR tax and all property tax, well, that's changed. It will be both. So, and that has been double-checked with the Department of Management. I've sent them our ballot, they've read it, they, it was news to me, but this would meet that requirement. SIR tax, I guess, just a quick explanation, I don't know if the example even be relative, but a person makes forty thousand, they have fifteen hundred dollars they owe the state of Iowa for state income tax, and there's, there's another line for school SIR tax, and they would owe one percent, so on that fifteen hundred dollars, they'd owe an additional fifteen dollars on the, on the income tax to the state of Iowa.
Well, and for people that haven't been in a situation of income SIR tax, it's really important to emphasize that point. It's not on the amount of money that's at the beginning if you're ten forty. It's what your tax liability is, that's how the law is written, and that can be confusing if you, if you've never dealt with income SIR tax before. And like John said, we don't have a choice of, your choice really is what percentage do you want. We have to have it, right?
Right. We do have to have it. Each percent of income SIR tax raises about fifty-five thousand dollars, lowers your tax rate fifteen or sixteen cents. So this tax rate that is proposed in this draft is twelve dollars and eight cents. So assuming you go two percent, and then you're looking at eleven ninety-something in the two percent SIR tax.
Where's that compared to what we're at right now?
This year, we're at eleven forty-three tax rate.
And two years ago, or three years ago, we were at eleven eighty-five in the Wally district and twelve oh seven in the SAC district.
When we came, when we came together, we're, we're getting close to where we were in the two districts being together. We, we dropped way down.
Way, way down.
For a couple, three years, which was fine, it was appropriate. We had fund balances, we had sharing money coming in, and there was a number of things going on, and that was the right thing to do.
I just want to set the table that, you know, even, even though we're at twelve oh eight and we're above where we were last year, we're not terribly far above where we were two or three years ago.
I wrote it down, I don't know that I, maybe it was in here. I think state average is...
Fourteen something.
Thought I wrote it down. Yeah, maybe fourteen oh two.
Sorry.
Yeah. The median was thirteen ninety-nine, so, and not that we need to be there, that's not what I'm proposing, but... The median was thirteen ninety-nine, so, and not that we need to be there, that's not what I'm proposing, but, um, it does. I don't feel that it's out of line, I didn't look at any area districts, I might have to call from Carol, then I'll know. Any questions on those six items that, that we really have any say in, or recommendations for changes? The, the first page, um, that says notice of hearing proposed budget, um, has a three-year writing history, and, um, is all funds combined. So, when you flip the page, the next page is just a breakdown of your taxes, um, how they come up with the twelve oh eight. And then, the third and fourth pages there are each fund broken down. So those will be the pages you'd wanna look at, the general fund, and, um, what we're proposing is basically a balanced budget for this year. Uh, not quite, nine-point-nine-one million in revenues and nine-point-nine-seven million in expenditures. Much better than some of the trend lines Brent, Brent was alluding to two or three years ago. And then the last six or eight pages is the Aiden levy worksheet, and like I said, we have about six places we enter in. I don't know how much of that you want me to go over, I'll do whatever you tell me, but.
I think, uh, give us some time to process this.
Okay. Sixty-one thirty-four, that's what we get per, per CD.
That's all.
Yeah, that's a four percent increase.
Almost a four percent.
With our, uh, change in enrollment, and change in cost per pupil, um, what the state calls new money, or additional funds for our district, is two-hundred-and-eighty thousand for next year, for this year, so. That's better than zero or the other way.
I don't have a problem with the, the draft that you've come up with, if, um, I'm not suggesting that, that I would lower anything when we actually approve this, or whatever, I don't wanna raise anything, so I'm fine with what you presented so far.
So does everybody understand that, that, that this is what's gonna be published, and, uh, maybe not necessarily what we're gonna vote on at the next meeting, but it won't be any higher than any of the numbers. So, uh, we don't, can't take any action on it?
No, yeah, I, really, it was those six things that I addressed, and if there was any big red flags, something you didn't want done that way, I just needed to know before we went to the paper. I guess I'm fairly comfortable with it, I think it.
Only thing I would say is that since, I know SAC's never had an, an instructional support levy, if somebody can put something in the paper about how that works.
Absolutely.
That'd be great, and explain a little bit, and explain a little why, we don't have a choice, um, it's how it's gonna be, so.
The income SIR tax piece you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We'll move on then, um, to personnel. Pay reservations and, or any, if there still aren't any. New contracts, we have, uh, three contracts that, uh, we need to discuss or approve tonight. Taylor Hanson for JV boys' track coach, Holly Nootsman for JV softball coach, and Steve Nootsman for JBR softball coach.
Make motion to approve those contracts.
Second?
Motion in the second to approve the, uh, contracts as stated, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Discuss future agenda items and set date, um, well, obviously, it's gotta be before April fifteenth. That's the day we're gonna have the budget in, how, how long do we need to have it before that, John?
One day, the fourteenth of September.
So, so the fourteenth is, is the day.
That's a Monday, you probably have a meeting on.
Can't do it that day.
My timeline would be, this is basically ready to go, so, if I give it to the papers this week, it'll publish on Tuesday, we have to wait at least ten days.
Tuesday the.
Twenty, yeah, so we have to wait at least until April third or fourth, but we have to have it prior to the fourteenth, so it's really that week of April.
Seventh, eighth.
That we need to have that meeting.
Okay. So any time in there, work for, better for anybody here? And, what'd you say?
I, I don't think I'll be in Iowa.
Well, if you're gonna be somewhere warm, you need to take me along.
I am. I'm looking at being going the fourth through the eleventh.
So where are we going? Work.
You can do work.
For this time, I'm taking some, last time, I was work.
Well, we also, we also discussed having a work session, uh, before that, so. I don't know what we wanna do there. I have the, Monday, the seventh open, but.
I'm not here.
You're not here?
I'm gone until the ninth.
So then, maybe we need to move it a week before that, when, when do you leave?
The fourth.
So how about the, the beginning of that week, the twenty-first?
For work session?
Well, and maybe even the meeting, too, I mean, if Amanda's gonna be gone that whole week, it's the seventh.
We can't do the budget prior to April third, publication doesn't.
Can we do April first?
We could do it later.
It's a little over a week from today, as long as we can get the stuff together. Tuesday the twenty-fifth, Brent?
Oh, that doesn't matter. I was just gonna say, it's gonna be, you're gonna have three meetings, and then we're gonna have this special one, then we're gonna have the budget one, and then you're gonna have a.
Bring another one.
Not that much, though.
Budget one really doesn't seem to be, be a big deal, because everybody seems to be okay with it.
Just have a timeline.
It's not really any other way around, it just be.
Well, that's fine, I don't care, whatever you wanna have.
You know.
So Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, at what time? And that's for a work session?
A work session, right.
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, at six.
Be all right.
Are ya?
Yeah.
At, at six o'clock, is that right?
Yes. I think we should go to SAC.
And then the budget hearing, who's that gonna be?
April fourteenth at five.
And then, the regular meeting's gonna be when?
Let's come back here, then to Lakeview for the budget one, and then, our next regular meeting on the third Monday, which is the twenty-first, can be in SAC City, it's gonna be a normal rotation.
Sounds great.
Commentary.
Same with the work session?
Yeah, let's do that.
I don't think this is the right time to say that we need to do this, but, I think the way we've got it right now, Lakeview, or SAC, Lakeview SAC is fine, but I think we need to go back to Auburn again. We were there, I believe, in November, uh, and we'll, so, yeah, maybe our May meeting, unless we want to have another meeting in April, I mean, we've already got two.
We may need to.
I just wanna make sure that I have this correct. Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, is a work session for elementary sections.
Yep.
So you might wanna get started on that seventh, long run.
Okay, we'll do that. April fourteenth at five o'clock is a budget hearing and a special meeting to approve the budget, or vote on the budget, and, and then the twenty-first is the regular meeting. And not to complicate it further, but one of the things we talked about was, uh, the calendar, we'll just.
Hold on to the next meeting?
Uh, well, we can do that on the twenty-first, um, or, yeah, probably the twenty-first. Um, we, I suggested considering a work session to get moving, um, back into the discussion of operating costs and facilities.
I told you, we should have another meeting in April.
I'm all for another meeting.
I think it's, I think it's coming.
Otherwise, how are we gonna get anything done?
I agree.
Okay, backs of calendars, everybody?
Back to the calendars, we discussed having a hearing before, or is that gonna happen at that twenty-first?
I would say we have enough on, on the plate, and make that the twenty-first, and we can do the hearing before.
Or before, like we did tonight?
There's substantive change.
Okay.
Does everybody experience this one much? So do we have a work session?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Can we not have a work session before the regular meeting on the twenty-first?
Yeah, you can, or.
I mean, we've done that before.
If you wanna have, you know, an hour, and then go into the, if there's a budget here. Or, that's fine with me.
Do it at five, and then have the.
How does that work for the? Five o'clock.
On the twenty-first? Doesn't work well, but, that's fine, five o'clock, on the twenty-first.
Thing we have to remember about that is, will we, will we have a public hearing that night? We don't know that for sure.
Oh.
Because a, a public hearing has to be published, and you have to have it at that time, so we could just go from a work session into a meeting if it did take an hour, so, which, we'd be here anyways, so it doesn't matter.
I think we're gonna probably need an hour, that's, that's fine.
I was just gonna say, at what point do we not allow, what do we need, I mean, we've always kind of said to keep it two hours, or a half, but.
Let's see where it takes us.
You're not gonna get that figured out, maybe, an eighty hour, so.
Right.
One hour would be fine. Just start.
Wow, I think we have it.
Twenty-fifth, fourteenth, and twenty-first.
Twenty-fifth, fourteenth, twenty-first. Said that.
Okay.
Move with adjourned, yeah.
Second. Motion in the second to adjourn, anybody not in favor of that, speak up, otherwise, let's get out of here. Thank you for coming, everybody.
I do appreciate all the time you guys give us, you guys understand that. But I even remember some of the terms, some of the budget stuff, you know.